Councilman Clooserman, could you lead us in the indication?
Yes. How many father we think that we're able to gather here tonight, Lord, discuss this city's business, Lord? Lord, please give us wisdom, spend our money wisely, Lord, and conduct our business in a professional manner, Lord, and ask for protection for our first responders and our children, Lord. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, I'd like to welcome troop one forty-six tonight. They're here to observe, but they're also, John Close is going to lead us in the pledge. So if you step up here, start things out.
Yeah. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. We'll call the council meeting for Monday, April seventh, twenty twenty-five to order. Praise and recognition. Wait a minute, we got, we got Jared on the phone. What, what's yours? They can't hear you, but I will pass along, I haven't said anything yet on that. Okay. All right, what, what Jared is doing praise and recognition is to former Senator Eric Nelson, who's now Secretary of Commerce, right Jared? And Governor Patrick Morsey. Last week, on Friday, we received two checks. One for ten thousand dollars for improvements to Morgan's Kitchen. And the other one was for thirty thousand dollars for us to put out the bid for, to upgrade the tennis court said, Ordinance Park to two pickleball courts and one tennis court. So I thank them personally for that and think all the work that's gone into it by everybody for this. So I got the checks, we'll be putting a bid out for Ordinance Park soon. And soon we'll have one tennis court and two pickleball courts up there. Like Governor Morsey will be in attendance for the planning to, for the ribbon cutting when we do it up there. So, but you know, money's getting tight and I give, I give thanks to Patrick for, Governor Morsey, sorry, for releasing these funds when he did for us. And they're leading, which is Jared, Local Economic Development Funds. And they come from the state, so. To date, there's only been four of those funds, monies that have been approved and we were the first one that were, that was approved. Networking does help guys, it really does. Get to know folks and good things happen, so. Anything else Jared? All right, any other praise and recognition? Yeah, you know, guys, I'm gonna say the same old thing. Public Works, I know parks the other night, the other day when it was raining. On the backside, not the side that, of the road, but the backside beside the cemetery, the creek kind of came over the banks, was running down the road, we didn't get anything in houses, did we?
I think one garage got a little bit in it.
One garage got a little bit in it and they were up there working and, and you know, we, we got together between Parks and Rec and Public Works and Stormwater and we're gonna come up with a solution, maybe some, a series of small retention bonds to slow the water down when we get that much rain. All right, but with. You're welcome Herman, but you know what, when mother ma, mother nature speaks, sometimes she wins.
I'm gonna give Herman the, the recognition here, because this man got a hold of me in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and drove me all over and has been screaming for these ponds, so that's why I looked over at him.
We're looking at it, I mean, we can maybe do one big one, but we'd have to spend money on property.
It'd be a big help either way.
About to hide, so you know, there's some options there that we gotta look at and see what best, financially, we can get done, so. All right, but they've done a heck of a job. It has, I am so sick of this weather.
Me too.
Yep, don't want to be whining. Any other praise and recognition? All right, approval minutes from City Council, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Questions or discussion or changes? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. Old business, amend city code to repeal and/or amend Article seventeen oh five point oh three to reenact Article seven fifty-three point three seven in Business and Taxation Code regarding contractor handyman license fee, ninety fifty. Ordinance previously requested ten five twenty twenty. Okay.
Sir.
Questions or discussion? All right, guys, the, the previous amount for contractors was what, ninety?
Ninety fifty, the only thing we're doing is, is I stuffed minutes, I hope that everybody, so that they would get the history of why we have to do it. Is requested to move it back from the building code to the business license. It's just, we can't charge contractor fee. So we've been stuck paying the, you know, the fifteen dollars, because we don't have anything set in code. They used to have a business license section for contractors, we're just moving it back.
Yeah, moving it over to another category is all we're doing. We're not charging a contractor fee by any means.
It's another one of the business.
Yeah, it's just a business license. Any other questions and discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. Approval of payment to West Virginia State Auditor's Office in the amount of ten, ten thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and forty-five cents to redeem property taxes, tax years twenty-three and twenty-four, to on property certified to the state in the name of TNC Construction and Services LLC, described, described as lots three, four, five, six, seven, eight, PTLT. Partial lot nine, BKDC to Kate Park ADN in St. Albans Corp. District in Canal County, West Virginia, to be paid via line item four, four, one dash four, five, nine.
Same move.
Questions, discussion? Does anybody have any questions on this? This is the old El Rancho property. All right, we got it shut down, but it went back to taxes. And what we're wanting to do is to prevent
Somebody else.
A non-responsible person from buying it for taxes. This allows us to buy it for taxes, then we can sell it. All right?
And if we don't do it, then somebody else can buy it and they'll make out like geniuses.
And they'll sit there and.
And we got a problem for the next however many years that we've already spent multiple years now fighting against.
We have, we have about, the initial sum was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of fines placed against this property. So the owner of this property owes us that much. If we do not buy these and it's sold to somebody else, they'll just go disappear. So by buying this, we preserve our hundred and ninety thousand dollar lien, which now with interest is probably well over two hundred thousand. So when we are finally able to sell it, we can be the first bid for two hundred and some thousand dollars. And if anybody comes in and bids higher, they, we get that money.
Yep.
And it, and it will also make sure that another slumlord, slumlords don't put a quarter million dollars into a piece of property.
Yep.
So that'll make sure that we keep those people away.
You notice I didn't use the terminology to slumlord and I said less responsible property of just built.
Just for a layman's. Where is this property?
El Rancho.
El Rancho, okay.
No, El Rancho property. Yep, and you know, across the street from them, a person that buys up tax property bought it and has not done anything with it. And it's a nice piece of property. So we want to prevent that from happening with El Rancho property.
One other thing, I know it's been a long time coming, but one of the things, the courts are very reluctant to sell people's property to pay debts. And so what they encourage creditors to do is go find personal property first. Well, this is something we can show the judge that he's not even paying his taxes. There is no personal property out there to be had. And more importantly, is that he is in jail and gonna be there for quite a while.
The wolf of West Virginia.
Yeah, so, so he, he has no intention of ever coming back and taking care of this property or taking care of the, not even, these taxes go back to twenty-three and twenty-four. So this just isn't something recent.
And the bad thing about it is, is we worked with Chris, Collins, our fire marshal, myself, you know, he gave us dates, he would have this fixed and this fixed, and they didn't fix it. And the property wasn't zoned for rental property and that's what he was doing. The electric wasn't up to code and so it was a dangerous situation. So we did a good job, Chris and Marshall and all involved did a great job of controlling this situation and getting it taken care of.
If we acquire that property, are we going to demolish it?
No, not necessarily.
Don't have to, but it's probably, I would think it's more valuable without that building on there.
Yeah, and it is, the, the property must be sold, we, we, is that correct?
Now, if we buy it for taxes.
We can then keep it to our own.
We are, we will be making the motion to sell the property with the court to satisfy our lien.
Yes.
And even if we did it first, we still have to take care of these taxes.
Yep.
State's gonna get their taxes one way or the other.
Well, that hotel don't have, doesn't have asbestos.
It's been around quite a while, I don't know.
Been there since the sixties, I would say that.
Now, it's not gonna bite us, because in the end, we'll get more out of the property, what we put into it. Will we get to two hundred thousand? Don't know. All right, that's an unforeseen, but we're gonna get something out of it. And guys, understand one thing, when you sell property, you own the property and you sell property, you put restrictions on it. You know, no rental property if you don't want rental property, no, no this, none that. And then you got codes that what can and cannot be built there. So, but you put restrictions on the property when you sell. Any further questions, discussion? Andy, you got anything?
Just an eyesore on me.
Yeah, I heard that. All right, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. All right, no new business suggested ordinance issues. Amend city code Article nine fifty-four point oh two to increase city service fees. All right. I've talked about this with several council members and Ronnie, when was the last time that this fee was set?
I stuffed it in the packets, does anybody have that all?
Two thousand nine. John, you, you did it.
Come on, John. Two thousand nine, all right. I, I want you to think about, all right, here, here's, here's my thought process. I want you to think about, first off, what all you get for three hundred dollars a year? You get police, you get fire, you get Parks and Recs, you get roads, you get everything else that Public Works does. City service fees also provide the following services, brush pickup, this is just Public Works. Brush pickup, extra Friday pickup, leaf pickup, paving city streets, street sweeping, pothole repairs, street sidewalk maintenance, tree trimming and removal from city properties, police and fire protection, maintenance of city parks, among other city necessities. The one thing they've left off is the Hanford Senior Center, get some of this. All right, now, I want you to think about the inflation that has occurred since two thousand nine. All right, now, this is my recommendation that we bump it up twenty-five dollars a quarter, which raises it from three hundred to four hundred dollars a year. And for the services that the citizens are receiving, I think it's more than fair. All right, but that, you all, council has the final decision on that.
I'd like to make a motion, send it to the ordinance committee.
All right, Jared, do you hear that? Councilman Eads made a motion to send this to the ordinance committee. He seconds that motion. Questions or discussion?
Are we gonna divide this into three monthly payments or still?
It's still be, it'd be, well, there's a lot of options out there, Brian. You could break it down and pay monthly if you wanted to. All right, which would be thirty-three. Yeah, thirty-three, thirty-three a month or every two months you wanna pay fifty. You know, we can, we can set it up however.
I think really, I think we're putting the cart above the, in front of the horse and let's let the ordinance.
Yeah, let the ordinance commit.
And talk about that and they, they then bring that to us with their recommendation. Rather than city would go about it now when we don't have the, the knowledge needed to details.
Sounds, sounds is good. We got a motion on the floor by Andy to send it to the ordinance committee and second by Jared. Any more questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. Or, no ordinances first reading, no ordinances second reading. Finance committee report recommendation, Councilman Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request a motion for the approval of payment of current invoices in the amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries.
I'd like to request a motion for the approval of payment to Doma County Sheriff's Office in the amount of five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents for the, to, to St. Albans Police Department Annual Software Maintenance to be paid from line item four, four, one dash four, five, nine.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries.
I'd like to request a motion for the approval of payment to Worldwide Equipment in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-seven cents for repairs to Public Works Department's transfer truck to be paid from line item five, six, six dash two, one, six.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
What was wrong with the John?
The rear end. The rear end got cracked. So we might be get some core back once, once they look at it and see what cost it. So there might be a guarantee on the core.
How old is the vehicle?
Uh, two thousand, point three, point four.
There's gotta be some type of warranty or something. You know, but anyway, all right. We got a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries.
I says, I'd like to request a motion for approval to award a bid to Dome Cycle for a UTV for the St. Albans Fire Department in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-five cents with an additional five thousand, eighteen dollars, ninety-four cents to be allocated for outfitting the UTV to the street legal. This is to be paid for opioid fights.
Questions or discussion?
Does this pertain to opioid?
This will be used as a response vehicle in inclement weather or different scenarios.
Four-wheel drive, we had a problem a while back going up the hill. We couldn't get up the hill with our vehicle. All right, am I correct on that?
Yeah, Nitro, they, they bought, they purchased the UTV last year, which I kinda thought was crazy, to be honest. And they ran the guts out of that thing all winter long in the snow and had awesome success. They, they, basically when the road was snow covered, they moved the medical equipment over to the UTV and they ran it up and down the streets and hills of Nitro. And it turned out to be a phenomenal investment. Keeps the big trucks off the road, it's much safer, it's easier to get through town. Not only during snow events, but flooding and that kind of thing. We anticipate using it for water rescue calls, technical rescue calls. Unfortunately, when people get struck on the railroad tracks and in traditionally, we park at the closest crossing and we hike in. So this will be a tool that we can utilize to get down the sides of the railroad tracks and access people along the tracks if needed. We plan on using it, you know, many different ways. I've heard several people make the comment that it's just another fire department toy, but I really think it'll be useful and beneficial. And again, this is not coming out of the general fund, there's, there's, you know, we managed to buy two pickup trucks last year without any city money and this one again, it's not, there's not gonna be any city money involved, so this is coming from the opioid settlement funds.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. Letters and reports.
I don't have anything, but Kevin, you have, I didn't get any information.
Oh, let's see, uh, this, this Saturday, guys, is our nature hike up in the woods that Debbie Keener puts on every year. It's a fantastic event. It's gonna be the history of St. Albans and we're having.
Pioneers.
Pioneers of St. Albans. And if you've ever come to a Debbie Keener event, you know, it's gonna be first class all the way. So registration starts at nine o'clock and then you'll have tours throughout the hike. You go over the different flowers, plants, all that stuff. And then there's all kinds of different exhibits that's gonna be there. As well as what I'm really excited for, Blinko Glass is coming as well.
They've got blow some glass.
And they're gonna teach how you blow the glass and stuff like that, so that's gonna be a great event. So stop by and for nothing else, the Pat Debbie on the bike, because it's great, we'll probably have three to four hundred people up there again this year, she does an excellent job.
Guys, I holler great men bring your children, your grandchildren, I know Dave brings his girls every year.
It's one of the best events in St. Albans.
It really is, it's very enlightening and educational.
Always, and there's always educational pieces, and I think that's what he, she's focusing on the pioneers that, that built this area. Going back to Washington's family and all, so that's the point of it.
Hey, Mike, y'all doing it again this year? Yep, the EP's gonna be there.
I got the rest of the park. The Easter egg hunt is April eighteenth and nineteenth, the eighteenth for the teenagers.
In the evening.
In the evening, the flashlight Easter egg hunt. And the nineteenth is for the kids. And the twenty-sixth of April is the first outdoor concert at Red Slide Park.
Very good. I, I do need to make some announcements. We are starting and partnering with WQBE
Movie Night.
This summer, all right? Somebody hollered Movie Night. For Movie Night, all right, but obviously in the summer, it's not gonna start till nine, nine fifty, nine thirty. What we're trying to do is to have music start playing about six, have some food trucks, different things going on. And the dates for those, all right, let me get to my calendar, are May twenty-fourth and thirty-one, the thirty-first. Then July twenty-sixth and August second. And, you know, we're calling it Saturday night on Old Main. All right, three of the four movies are gonna be very family oriented. There might be one that's geared more towards adults, like action and stuff like that, but.
These will be on Main Street?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna put, QBE's gonna come in, put the screen at the end of Main Street where the stage usually sits. And people can bring their chairs, but we're gonna have music on the plaza starting about six, six-thirty and play throughout the evening. And like I said, there's gonna be food trucks and I'm sure a lot of the businesses will be open, so that will be a great opportunity to bring more people to our community.
What time is it? Six to nine, and then six o'clock you said music and then nine.
Yeah, yeah, nine, you know, whenever it gets dark, they'll start the movie.
That's great.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Yes, Easter's coming up. If you only go to church twice a year, Christmas and Easter, I challenge you to go to it Easter and Christmas church service.
Like, sir, any other letters or reports? Yes, sir.
Need to make an announcement about the annual spring cleanup for the city of St. Albans. It'll start on April twenty-eighth with the word one. Each day there will be a different word up through May the ninth, when it'll do the entire city.
We need to publicize this in a big way on social media. All right, the website, my site, your old page, whatever, we need to publicize this in a big way so folks know. And I believe that the first citywide yard sale's May thirtieth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
May third, so you can sign up if you want your name on the list over at City Hall and or, no, not City Hall, at the chamber, okay.
Ronnie, stop that.
I was corrected, yeah.
And I think if you look on Facebook, I think that she put something where you can do it online as well.
Yes.
There's a link that you can do it online, if you see, Deb Austin Brown put it up.
Yeah, but sometimes there's nobody over there.
Right.
David, you're packing, you had the newsletter for the chamber, she has all the information.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I'll give it everyone. Public Works is going to have, has recycling bins. The Public Works is going to have, has got recycling bins for people who are heavy plastic recyclers.
The recycling cans, really?
Trash cans.
And so people will be able to contact Public Works if they're heavy recycling, heavy plastic recycling, and they can get one of these, one of these trash cans for that purpose. And there's a questionnaire, the cans have serial numbers on them, so we'll...
They gotta sign a contract.
Yeah. And so, anyway, people will be able to contact Public Works about that if they recycle plastics a lot.
Very good.
And they're nice. I picked mine up today.
Did you? Yeah, picking up Public Works.
Yes, Public Works.
Any other announcements or letters or reports? All right, we have no appointments, announcements. ZB eight, Tuesday, April eighth at seven P and, seven PM in the MUC conference room. Finance committee, Monday, April fourteenth at four-thirty PM in the MUC conference room. Lay the levy, Tuesday, April fifteenth at five PM in the MUC conference room, a quorum of council is required. How many council members can be there?
Is that before the MUC meeting?
That's before the MUC meeting. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, we got a quorum. Okay. Jared be there, yep. I heard you, Jared. MS four, MUC Board, Tuesday, April fifteenth at five-thirty PM in the MUC conference room. City Council, Monday, April twenty-first at six-thirty PM in Council Chamber. I wanna say that I've got a meeting tomorrow at the Charleston Area Lines. I cannot give names, I cannot give information because, number one, I don't know exactly what's going on, all right? But we have to sign a non-disclosure agreement, so once I figure it out, I can't give specifics. But there's some good things happening, is all I wanna say. The possibility is some very good things going on, so...
Maybe an eyesore going away?
Huh?
Maybe an eyesore going away?
I don't know about, again, I don't know what's going on, Brian. I honestly don't. That's why we're meeting tomorrow, all right? So, but afterwards, I cannot give specifics until I'm told, I can't tell. So keep up the good work, guys, keep up the good work. All right, any other announcements? Fourteenth, Business After Hours next Monday, fourteenth at Shucker's, starting at, what, five-thirty?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Yeah, five o'clock, okay. Any other announcements? All right, it's now time for public forum. Any resident wishing to address council may step up to the podium, give your name, your address, all right, and you got five minutes to speak your piece.
What do you name? My name is Elijah Schultz, I live at seven hundred and twenty Washington Street. Moved here about five years ago, and I've been quite happy to be in St. Albans rep since.
We're happy to have you.
One thing that I've been particularly pleased with because of my professional background is the quality and affordability of water and sewer service in this town. I'm a, for context, I'm a civil engineer. I worked as a consultant for various utilities around the state, unfortunately have not had the opportunity to work directly with the city or with the Municipal Utility Commission, but as a customer, I have been happy to be a customer here. In light of that, I was somewhat distraught to learn late last year that West Virginia American Water Company had made an offer to purchase the St. Albans Municipal Utility Commission's water and sewer infrastructure. The utility commission voted to reject that offer rightfully, in my opinion, but my understanding, having dealt with a few such offers from the water company with other utilities, is that they will tend to push the issue and eventually try and bring it before vote here with the city council. And so, I understand that's not on your all's agenda tonight, but I just, as soon as I learned, I felt a responsibility to come here and make my opinions clear that I do not think that would be in the best interest of this town or its residents. I've been comforted talking to some of you here today that you seem to be in agreement on that point, and so I will not bore you with the big sheet of math I have in front of me demonstrating that back. But if any of you is interested in the dollar sense of it, I'd be happy to discuss it with you.
Well, first of all, I wanna say it did come in front of council, and it was voted down.
Okay.
All right, council voted it down. You know, even if there is minimal increases across the board down the road, it's still gonna be cheaper West Virginia American Water. I mean, it's ridiculous what they get for it, it's ridiculous what they offered us, all right? It was almost offensive, and we have developed an eight to ten-year plan to correct the weaknesses that we have in our system, you know, the aging pumps and things like that, so, but no, I appreciate that, especially coming from an engineer that works in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and apologize that I'm late to the party, apparently.
That's all right.
Quite all right.
Yes, sir, thank you.
My name is Isaac Fediga, I live on fifty-two Tenth Avenue, so actually I share a fence with the water plant, and I just came to echo everything that Elijah Schultz said. We are colleagues, we don't work for the same firm, but we do the same work, so I believe everything he said, and as a matter of fact, I lived in Charleston for two years, I've been here for three and a half years, love it here, but before then, I was in Charleston for two years, and we experienced the same water line break in the same spot on the main street that my, that my street was with a side road of at least twice a month for the two years I lived there, and the bill was more than both my water and sewer bill is here. So I think you all are doing a great job, and we appreciate you all, and keep fighting the good fight.
Thank you very much. We're glad to have you in St. Albans. Mayor Loon.
Wow, well, I'm really glad that they were talking about water, because there's nothing, nothing more important for people than basic clean air and water, and then, of course, food and shelter. But we have some people in our legislature that are trying to pollute with more ethylene oxide across the river and also in our streams. And tonight on WCHS, they're having a thing at eleven o'clock about ethylene oxide, and I've talked to Ben Salongo about this, how many young parents are gonna want their kids to be playing soccer when they're gonna be breathing in more ethylene oxide? If they think that's a money-making thing, I think they need to think about that in addition to the school there in Dunbar. Our own Maya Ni from St. Albans went to McKinley and the high school, she has a doctorate in public health, and she's been trying to help us for years about this, and a guy from the West Virginia Manufacturers Association wrote a condescending letter about she, she didn't know that the risk is just a little bit of risk and that that's probably okay, you know? I don't think he lives in that area where he's gonna breathe it. I don't think he lives there at all. So I'd like to know where he does live, if I could hold him, I'm gonna ask him where he lives. So I hope that if you have a chance to look at that tonight, I've got a few papers, tell the time, eleven o'clock, WCHS, and the water, I'd like for the council maybe to tell the DEP, we don't need any more pollution added to our water, because it does come from streams and it'll eventually get to us someday.
Thank you, Mayor Loon.
Thank you.
I have been on several of the meetings on ethylene oxide, but... Yes, ma'am.
My name is Andy Amenzina, we have a house at fourteen oh-six Park Road, and the back of that house is on Ackerman Road, and we had a claim to have that road extended so that we could have access to the back of our property.
Where's Park Road and Ackerman?
Off McQueen.
Off McQueen, oh, okay, yeah.
One of the neighbors has put in a claim against having that road extended because it ends at their property, and so we would just like to inform the city council and the city attorney about an invalid statement that the Bennett family is making about the road. It's based on hearsay, which is not valid in any court of law. She doesn't bring the attorney with her that has made the statements and, or any written statement from the attorney or provided the name and address of the attorney. As any student of the law knows, hearsay is not valid for any argument in a court of law. Therefore, we'd like to ask that the rejection of her claim, since she has not provided any evidence for that.
Mayor, can I ask, can I reject?
Yes, sir.
Your husband came to our Public Works meeting, and we discussed the problems that you all were having and what you wanted to, and in agreement, ninety percent of us were in agreement to that, but everything that you all want to do, we still need to get to our attorney, which we haven't yet, and then we was gonna bring it back to the council that lets you all know what we have decided, and then go from there. So I think the statement you were saying, we had already kinda shot that down in our meeting, so, not to say anything that you did anything wrong, or we did anything wrong, but to let you know that we are, we do have it on the table to take care of.
We appreciate that.
Is Park Road, is that as you're going up the first ride?
Yeah.
That's where one of my classmates, Zachary Green.
Ackerman's the first ride.
You agree, okay. Yeah, I, to be honest with you, I personally have not seen this request, but once it is officially in my hands, we will turn it over to our super duper attorneys for their opinion, and then we'll go from there, okay? But I thank you for bringing that up, because, you know, like I said, hearsay doesn't mean anything, you bear shooting proof.
I just wanted to emphasize that we were, we are working in a certain way.
Yes.
We appreciate that, because she's looking to do some surgeries, and we need to have access to all of them. It's not something that you actually have to do, because this is sort of a fair part.
Does your house face canal terrace?
No.
No, the alley, it's across the alley.
Across the alley, okay.
Their house, front Park Drive, back of their house would be Ackerman, that runs extended out. But it canal terraced, then Ackerman, then Parks where their house faces.
I had a paper out up there when I was about thirteen, fourteen years old. But, yeah, we will, once this, we'll get it leveled out and, you know, we'll get the opinion from the attorneys, then it'll come back to council.
No, this isn't a council.
P.
No.
Public Works.
Public Works.
Strictly Public Works?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a right-of-way issue.
Okay.
This has already been sent to the board.
Okay, all right, Timmy's got it, y'all got it. They already have it, so they're looking at it, and as soon as we get word, we'll let y'all know.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you all. Any other residents wishing to address public forum? With none, I will entertain a motion for a German.
Motion for a German, say it.
All right, all in favor, say bye.